We'll have to call the meeting to board, begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
And Lawson.
Here.
Hey, I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carry. Consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve and this will be um including the warrants except for the one for N B Cook general contractors, this is a separate item on our agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, motion carry. Alright, welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Don't believe we have any citizens requests or anything, okay?
Uh I just have uh questions about ordinance nine oh nine.
About? Yes, yes.
Uh I just want layman's terms. Non-lawyers speaking.
And which ordinance was it again? Nine oh nine? Oh, okay, and this is a new section of our ordinance?
Yeah, I uh somebody sent me a picture of it uh on my fan Facebook, but I couldn't really read it. I just wanna know layman's terms. What is changing from what's already in place?
There wasn't, it's a new section and it's required by the um Iowa Legislature passed it that has to be included.
But it doesn't include, it does not include bars. It's just, no, it's just adult establishments. No, they have, there's definitions of what an adult establishment is um in that, in the code.
Not so far.
But we need to do it because it's a, it's a new state.
Okay.
New state code.
Yeah, a lot of things, and it was about
No, no, we're not shutting anybody down or? Okay. Thank you. Alright, so we have no committee reports, we'll go um move into the public hearings. Public hearing number one, public hearing regarding amended provisions pertaining to bond requirements. Do we have any written comments?
No.
Any oral? Alright, then we'll close that hearing. O- open the second public hearing, public hearing regarding adding a new section pertaining to adult establishment nuisances. Yeah, that's fine. So, any written? Okay, we have the oral, so we'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Public hearing number four regarding amending provisions pertaining to publication of minutes, any written comments?
No, I'm sorry.
Alright, no, that's alright. Any oral? Okay, we'll close that public hearing. Public hearing number five, public hearing regarding amending provisions pertaining to fire officials' authority to cite violations. Any um written comments? Oral?
Are those just code violations?
Yes.
Just code.
Did you skip number three? Or did you say number?
Oh, number four? Oh, number three. Open the third, yeah. Public hearing number three regarding amended provisions pertaining to sidewalk liability.
Good catch, cuz I haven't gotten there yet.
Any? Any um written comments?
No.
Okay, any oral? Okay. Public hearing number six, public hearing regarding amending provisions pertaining to pedestrians right of way, any written?
No.
Any oral? We will close that public hearing. Public hearing seven regarding amending provisions pertaining to operating budget preparation. Any written comments?
No.
Any oral? Okay, we will close that hearing. Number eight, public hearing regarding amending provisions pertaining to electronic meetings. Any written comments?
No.
Okay, any oral? We will go ahead and close um that hearing then, we'll move into general government. The Hudson City Council maintains the right to waive the first and second readings of the ordinance as presented and may pass the third and final reading of the same ordinance within the same council meeting. Item A. Discussion action to approve third reading ordinance nine oh seven and ordinance amending Hudson Municipal Code Chapter sixty-one. Traffic control devices by amending section sixty-one point zero six. Automatic traffic enforcement, paragraph seven fines.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
This is all state.
Just changing the fines to what the state requires?
They require more stuff, so.
Alright, roll call. Uh Wyatt?
Bye.
Cook?
Hi.
Reister?
No.
Uh Sewell?
Hi.
I missed.
Lawson.
Lawson, I'm sorry.
Hi.
It is so Monday.
Yeah.
Alright, item B. Discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine oh eight and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to bond requirements. And this allows for an insurance policy rather than a bond. I believe, was that?
Um, this one, yes. That and they've changed, the legislation of cha- has changed the way we have to go about doing getting bonds, we have to wait until in an election year and it has to, over a certain dollar amount, it has to go to public vote.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call. Uh Lawson?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Reister?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Bye.
Sewell?
Hi.
Alright, item C, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine oh nine and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by adding a new section pertaining to adult establishment news nuisances.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
Do we just review this for the sake of, so people know what it is, it's not it's not for bars, as he brought up.
Means any business that provides nude or topless dancing or operates any other adult oriented business. And the nuisance exists when established by clear and convincing evidence that an owner manager employee patron or guest of a blah 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 commits any of the following acts, unlawfully discharges a firearm, assaults another person, engages in a riot and will not disperse. So we don't have any of those businesses right now. But, you can't do any of those things in any of the businesses here. Pretty much, yeah, it just says you still can't do it if we get one of those businesses. From what I understand it.
Still some property available in order tiers.
Any further discussion? Okay, roll call. Uh Reister?
Alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, aye.
Oh, did you say me? Aye.
Uh Wyatt?
Aye.
Hi.
Thanks, Matthew. Item D, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine ten and ordinance amending the Code of ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to sidewalk liability. Let me just.
Second.
And it's just outlining like the property owners' responsibility.
It does put it more back on the city though too, having some teeth in this game as far as the responsibilities, but that's why we're gonna have to work with all of us.
Yeah, or we'll have to be more proactive on
So there's some
on sending letters then.
Discussions amongst public works and everybody else on how to do that, I'm assuming?
Yeah, yeah, we'll get there.
Rock on, thank you. Hey, anything else? Roll call then? Lawson?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Hi.
Reister?
Hi.
Sewell?
Hi.
Okay, item E, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine eleven and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to publication of minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Reister?
Hi.
Sewell?
Aye.
Wyatt?
Aye.
Lawson?
Ah. Hi.
Alright, motion carries five zero. Okay, item F, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine twelve and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to fire officials' authority to city violations.
So moved, first of all.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Um, are we going to have to name, and this might be another question too? Who on the fire department is allowed or is um certified to be able to write those citations? I'm assuming just like a general firefighter, one can't come up there and say you're gonna get a ticket.
I think it is just the
Chief and maybe a captain or something like that.
Chief and assistant chief.
I was gonna say, it doesn't say that in here though.
Okay.
So we may wanna just check to see if we need to add that as far as
Okay.
that and putting it into their law so that they know what they can write for as well, so we may need to add that to the next public safety meeting too, just to discuss it with Gary. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Wyatt?
Bye.
Lawson?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Sewell?
Hi.
Reister?
Hi.
Alright, motion carries five zero. Okay, item G, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine thirteen and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to pedestrians right of way.
Oh.
Uh motion to approve?
Second.
And this just kinda defy uh defines what a pedestrian and kinda then also talks about pedestrian convenience and terms of vehicles and Alright, any other, any discussion? Roll call. Cook?
Hi.
Reister?
Hi.
Uh Lawson?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Bye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Uh motion carries five zero. Okay, item H, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine fourteen and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to operating budget uh preparation. Um it just kinda defines more specific dates, like by this day, by March, you know.
Yeah, we did it, we did it by practice last year, um but it's actually not defined in law this year.
So moved. Second.
Discussion?
There are some towns that didn't get theirs in, so make sure that doesn't happen here.
Still don't.
Uh sure, so
Yes.
let's not be one of those if we can help it.
No.
Roll call. Uh Wyatt?
Bye.
Lawson?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Sewell?
Hi.
Reister? Alright, motion carries five zero. Okay. Item J, discussion action to, oops, excuse me, discussion action to approve the first reading ordinance nine fifteen and ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Hudson Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to electronic meetings. It just gives a lot of more definitions in terms what I saw, what like hybrid mediums and virtual meetings and uh things, virtual meetings are here to stay, so we have to be able to give everyone the ability to attend online if they so choose, which we're already doing, so.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call. Uh Lawson?
Hi.
Cook?
Hi.
Reister?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Bye.
Sewell?
Aye.
Uh motion carries five zero. Okay, item J, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven four. A resolution for approval of payment request number five regarding the City Hall Community Center update project and that was in the amount of sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars and eleven cents. I just probably not payment?
Uh, no, it will probably, because we'll, we'll add up here, okay, in all of that, so.
So, do I motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Uh just how, how's it going?
Uh, the community center is completed, uh we have to just put, move table down, back downstairs. Um, up here. Um, I believe that is scheduled to start like the middle of September, I believe, and then be done sometime in December.
And that'll be the back half starting first?
Yes, we'll be starting in the building inspector's office first.
Any other discussion? Roll call. Sewell?
Aye.
Cook?
Hi.
Lawson?
Hi.
Wyatt?
Bye.
Reister?
Hi.
Alright, motion carries five zero. Okay, item K, discussion action to approve resolution three two seven five, a re- resolution approving a request for bus parking at Freedom Park for Hudson Community Schools. And this would go until approximately what, mid-November, did you say?
It's a good question, it's kind of an open, it's an open, we don't actually have a permanent solution
Right.
for the bus barn. Uh, we got a couple of options that we're looking at.
Okay.
Um. You know, the owner of one property has approached us, it's in development right now, but the board has not taken any action.
Okay.
So it's kinda depending on whether I'm gonna come to the agreement or just the property, if the property's big enough. All of the things.
Okay.
Which we think it is, but we haven't you know, we don't know for sure. Um, so it's an open-ended request, we think it'll be wrapped up by the end of the calendar year. Uh, but a lot of things have to happen, like we have to come to agreement on where it's gonna be, this is the building we're gonna use and so. I, I, I think we'll, I think we'll know a lot by the end of the calendar year, but if, but and I can't give you anything better than that, if, if, if you want me to come back in December or and give you an update. You know, as we get closer to having this resolution, I'm more than happy to do so. Um. The, the the, the problem that we're running into is we have, we, we were gonna sell off one of our buses and we didn't because we had, we needed to add another route. So space is an issue, so I need something large enough to house our entire fleet, plus all of our smalls. And that's, uh, that's a tough nut to crack. So what my, what my request right now is just for the seven route buses at Freedom Park. One of my drivers went down there a couple of weeks ago to see if it would fit, and it would.
It wouldn't take up all the spaces?
It would take up, it would, it probably would. It probably, and I don't know that for sure, cuz I didn't go down there, uh when he did this. We got eleven in our fleet, we went with seven down. I think he backed it in, so I, I don't think it takes up all the spaces, but I, but again, I wasn't I wasn't down there, I didn't try it.
But if they back in, they'll probably block the sidewalk, goes along the road, don't?
Could be, don't know. Which I hate to, I don't wanna block the sidewalk, I think that's problem with kids walking that way too. To get across to Primrose. Uh, I don't know how many of them use that, but it's an option. Well, they're not walking to Primrose, we're taking them to school now.
That was one stop.
Really?
Yeah. So that was, that was another kind of a side issue, we, we've had a lot of that, you see, for the last couple of years for in-town bus transportation, and we resisted it. Because, for a lot of reasons, right? But what ended up happening, or what is, what hasn't ended up happening is the northern, the northern tier area uh has a lot more kids in it, and that, I got three buses that go north. And the bus that picks up you guys probably don't care about any of this.
No, we do, it's a do.
Actually, yeah.
Uh, but the bus that goes into like Twin Oaks. Um, it also, on the last leg of that round, went up and then came south back down Eldora Road, and it picked up four or five stops there, and then the last stop it picked up was at Whitetail. Okay, well, as that Twin Oaks area has developed we got more kids between between Twin Oaks and the Butterfield Road that I needed to see if I could find a way to peel off the kids on uh to give, to give more space, that's how that, that, that's how we, I'm going in a circle here, that's how we came back to this idea of in-town transportation. So I took uh in-town transportation, I split between four routes, so that route that picks up Eldora Road, it goes to Whitetail, then it comes across, goes over to Rainbow Drive, then it goes to Primrose. And then it comes back up to school. That's a full bus. Then I got another bus that comes on the south, it comes up Holmes Road, comes down and picks up at uh Bonnie Boulevard. And then it goes to school, and then I got a bus that goes on the south, to the southwest of town. It comes back through, and then it goes to Saint Tim's and picks up two stops at Saint Tim's, and that bus is full. Um, so, anyway, to your point about Primrose, about the kids walking, they're I don't see that as an issue, but I mean, I understand the concern there.
Well, we can't
Now, we're trying this right now, so we, we, we don't know you know. I thought people would be tripping over themselves, so thank you for providing uh in-town transportation, I didn't get that, but I did get some Um, my only concern with, with covering a sidewalk, we wouldn't allow that to happen in any other area of town for business or for anybody else, so we have to make sure. What do you think about snow? That's my only other concern, is when the snow starts to fly? How do we get around this?
Out with the new parking for the school, we actually take all the snow around the school, and we're starting to push it down Freedom Park now. So we push it right through where all those spots are, and out into the grassy area. So that would be the only thing in the wintertime is when we're pounding snow, those buses, we kind of have to get on their way. Or at least, at least Mary, we can get through there to get the snow off and get hard.
And uh my question is too, is if it takes up all the parking, what about the pickleball courts and would there be parking for people wanting to use those?
I think, is it youth soccer going on up there too right now? I don't know how long that was on.
Some of the practices are there, a lot.
I'm looking at aerial view of that map right now.
Yeah.
Can you tell me spots are?
Um, Dr. Lawson. Um. Banalism, support from the community, police staff, what are you looking for from us other than the record?
That, that would be a that would just, just place part of the bus.
Just a place, okay, you're gonna monitor that, watch banalism too.
I'm not sure.
I'm not gonna be patrolling at three o'clock.
No, no, but, but it falls back.
But you guys know we had break-in, didn't you?
In the school?
No, no.
Um.
Did you?
Yeah.
They had a break-in probably a month ago. Um, in the, into the construction
Oh, man.
They were at the tools.
Yeah, about fifty thousand dollars worth of stuff was stayed.
Seriously?
Did we catch anybody? No, because there's no cameras in the new addition yet. Technology, is there any chance?
The buses can be housed farther away from campus, I know your drivers would have to go there to get to the buses. But is there a chance we could put them you know, or, or rec fields or schools rec fields, or even, now I'm here about co-op or something like that?
Well, as far, as, as far as that goes, I mean, you get no, you would get no complaint from me. Um, our biggest change, our biggest challenge right now is well to be frank, it's, it's just a nuisance, cuz they're kind of in a way for people to park and you know, that area back there is pretty congested during the day. Um. You know, the, the, the thing that they liked about Freedom Park was there's bathroom down there.
Yeah.
I mean, that was really it. Uh, but they're, you know, they're, they're down, they're down there for fifteen minutes before they roll. Uh, they're, they're down there a little bit longer in the morning, so they get, they get to the pre-trip. Uh, maybe they have to do it twice a day, I don't know, but um. That's a good idea, it's down by the co-op, I didn't think about that, cuz there's plenty of space down there that we cross from the PD.
We have cameras too.
And they have cameras.
The only hassle would be in the wintertime, it would be to put them, so.
We don't, because we wanna get, well, two hundred diesel, but the rest of them, obviously, no.
So, the parking that's south of the old bus barn, the diagonal that's in there.
Hold on a second.
On
On Wood Street.
Wood Street.
Oh, on Wood Street, yeah, the diagonal parking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you gonna utilize any of that or not for the buses? I know through school time, it's gonna be tough, which is fine, but I'm wondering like, post-school you know, I heard the conversation about opening up a few parking spots for soccer, football and that. Would we be able to move a cou- or would you be able to move a couple of those buses maybe to that location at the end of the route or?
Are those, is that a parking on Wood Street?
Yeah.
Um. Yeah, the, the problem right now is when the, when those parking's an issue, right?
Yeah.
So we all get that. Um, so if I start taking parking spots away from community members and kids for practices, then that's gonna create problems too, I mean it's just, we have parking issues. We're gonna be a little, we're gonna be in better shape after we get this done, but um. But yeah, I mean, I suppose we could.
Well, you know, I didn't know, like on the weekends.
Yeah, on the weekend, we, yeah, we, I'll, I'll stick a bus anywhere in front of place. On the weekends, on the weekends, I, I'm fine with them being back behind the school. Our biggest issue in the immediacy is when we have a home football game.
Yeah.
Is, I don't have any place to go with those buses. I got, I got my three spares tucked up behind the junior high auditorium, but I can't really fit anything else up there. So, you know, and then again, once maybe, knock on, knock on wood, but this is probably not realistic, by the time we have our first high school football game, maybe the high school parking lot will be open. I mean, it's, they, they, they poured that concrete, so.
I guess, I would, we need to probably first and second this, so we can have more discussion, but
Come on, sorry.
No, you're good.
No, well, and Heather told us last time, we don't need to do that to have discussion.
I mean, I guess, Dr. Boss, we'll work with you. That's my feeling is, let's work together, you know, how do we make the solution the best that we can?
How about, how about you tell me, you tell me this, you, you give me instructions and say, don't block X number of spots and don't block site, I mean, I'd park them in there, just head in then. You know, you tell me that, and, and if I can't fit them all, I just say, alright, drivers. Three, we go here, two, we go here, and less than you go there.
I almost wonder if the rec field parking lot would be.
Or the, or down, across from the PD, cuz PD, you're gonna have cameras, which is gonna be, to me, would be a better option than rec field that is no cameras.
They're gonna have PD to be, they can be.
Yeah, you can always come around.
Ryan, Ryan, Ross, from the, from your shop?
I mean, truly, I would say, to me, I would say if they wanna use half of the spots that are available at Freedom Park. Yeah, I don't know how many spots, Matt was trying to count from the aerial view.
Looks like fifteen, but the thing is, I don't know if any of them is deep enough to actually park in the long way.
Right, Jake, I don't know, there's a trailer up there, I drove um up past it this afternoon.
It's one of the contractors of the school.
Plus, those buses are wider than a typical car spot, you know what I mean? So if we, you know, could you pull two in opposite of how they normally would park? Like perpendicular to. Right, and have, still be to the sidewalk, or could you put three? I think you might will put two in for sure, but I like, I mean you know, if there's a parking problem there, I mean, then we're creating a parking problem for soccer.
You know, if there's a parking problem there, I mean, then we're creating a parking problem for soccer.
Right.
This is, you guys don't have to try to workshop this and figure it out. It's fine. I. It is totally fine for you to say no, I get it. I I'll go back to them and say, why do we go across the park from the police station? That that's fine too.
Because even if you've got five, six, or seven, yeah, I was gonna say.
How about we um think about a motion that we just go ahead and give the school permission um to park. At one of the available city. Places and that will um. Work with Jake to. Not determine the location.
All right.
That's fair. Whatever's easiest for you guys. I don't want to create problems for.
I would make that motion.
I would second that or third or whatever.
And then I'll just.
I would also request that you don't, don't block sidewalks. That's fair. Um.
And tell me, Dr. Boss, keep us updated.
Yeah.
As we get to November, December, especially for our public works guys, where do they need to plow on?
Down there, you need to know move, we'll remove the stone.
Yeah, just keep this updated at some point in that time. That'd be perfect.
Fair enough. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
So roll call then.
Lawson.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Uh Reister.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
All right, motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Yeah, if there's anything else we can help with, you know, obviously, you know, we're here.
Okay, um item L, discussion action to approve resolution three, two, seven, six, a resolution for approval. Of road closures for Ambot's event, and this is on September fourteenth. And this is for another charity ride.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh Cook.
Uh.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Uh Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries five zero.
Is there a timeframe for this?
Well, um I think they start at like eight thirty in the morning. They start serving breakfast. And then it's um kickstands up at ten and then they leave and then they come back.
About three to ten. It's gonna be an all-day thing. From the sounds of it.
Okay, um so we on roll call?
Nope, we did that.
We did that? Okay, thank you.
I'm saying we're all the way down to the letter U.
Longest agenda ever.
Yeah. Okay. Um item M then. Discussion action to approve resolution three, two, seven, seven, a resolution for approval of road closures for the federal pub event. And that is going to be held on September first. And I believe that begins at three PM and they're not sure when that's going to end. It'll be the, it's the same event that the hive is having.
They're all doing it on the first. I don't remember what that's for.
Wasn't it like a block party or something?
Believe so. I think they are gonna have like live music maybe.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt.
Yeah.
Reister.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Matt had me confused.
Okay, item N, discussion action to approve resolution three, two, seven, eight, resolution for approval to offer employment in set wage. For part-time police officer position for the city of Hudson, Iowa, and this is to offer to Kristen. Um Sh- Shaster, Schuster? I'm sorry, not Shaster. A motion?
So moved.
If I may ask, what was it? What was our rate?
Uh twenty-five seventy.
Are we, you just come with that with her um. Years of experience?
That's just what the union contracts that we put up.
Was it twenty-five what?
Seventy.
She is a retired uh Waterloo police officer and so she's just now wants to get back into it.
And certified, right?
Yes.
Certified, so it don't pay for schooling.
She just has to take a re-pressure course.
For anyone who's wondering, like, how does this fit into the big picture of our staffing for police?
That's us back.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't add anybody, we just built a position.
Got it.
We moved one up from part-time, choose both time, one up both time left. This is backfilling that part-time.
Got it.
Roll call.
Hi.
Wyatt.
We just haven't had it.
Yes. Oh, wait.
What?
Yeah, that's fine. Uh Sewell.
Hi.
Uh Reister.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Hey, item O, discussion action to approve resolution three, two, seven, nine, a resolution for approval of supplemental professional service agreement. Number twenty-seven, Butterfield Road Bridge Replacement Project. And this is uh with our continuing agreement with ACOM. So and this is for the. Um like it says, the Butterfield Bridge. So they're taking out a bridge from like nineteen fifty and. Um putting in.
All the city has to pay for is a little bit of land acquisition and engineering, the rest is covered by the Department of Transportation.
Five hundred thousand dollar grant.
That old one down by Jordan's?
Yep, yep, exactly.
The grid removal and you're replacing it with a uh three box structure.
Well. Cool. Second.
Just can't get a motion in there. Roll call.
Lawson.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Hi.
But I can't say that I'm continuing to be excited about being displaced on roads again.
Give him one.
Okay, item P, discussion action to approve resolution three, two, eight, zero. Resolution amending, resolution number three, two, zero, eight, deleting property from the Hudson Northern Tier. Uh commercial urban renewal, and this is because of an updated legal description.
So moved.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Uh Wyatt.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Okay, item Q, discussion action to approve resolution. Nine, one, six, and ordinance, amending ordinance number nine, zero, four, defining property from the tax inc. Increment, oh increment financing district for the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area. Of the city of Hudson, Iowa pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the Code of Iowa. And before we just start discussion and take a motion. Um we are being asked to go ahead and do waive the first and second reading. And go to the third, and this is from our bond attorney.
So this is just with the updated legal description. That's why it wasn't there in the first place.
Yeah, it it was um the legal description that we started with was not what was what ended up being recorded. That was the fault of our ordinance, um. The attorney for.
So it's the same property, everything that we had previously, it's just deleting out the one and putting the one back in. Then I would make a motion that we waive first and second and pass the third for this.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Item R, discussion action to approve a resolution three, two, eight, one, a resolution amending, resolution number three, two. Two, one, declaring necessity and establishing an urban renewal area pursuant to section four oh three. Point four of the Code of Iowa and approving urban renewal plan amendment for the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal Area. And again.
I'll move that we waive.
No, that'll be the next one.
No, yeah, this is just a. Yeah, it's just a revelation.
Sorry. Um, sorry.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
Watch out.
Thank you, Dr. Boss.
Have a good night.
Okay, roll call.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Uh motion carries five zero.
Hey, item S, discussion action approved ordinance nine seventeen and ordinance amending ordinance number nine oh six. Providing for the provision of taxes levied on taxable property in the May twenty twenty-four addition. To the Hudson Northern Tier Commercial Urban Renewal. Area pursuant to section four oh three point one nine of the Code of Iowa. And again, this would be the. Um place for the waving law first.
So move that we waive the first two readings and proceed to the third. Second.
Hey, discussion? Roll call.
Reister.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Sewell.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Um, item T, discussion action to approve resolution three, two, eight, two, resolution approving amended development agreement. With L A K Holdings LLC. And basically, it's just the legal description.
So moved. Second.
Thanks, Lauren.
Love that lag thing, right?
Um it's one oh three D B.
Which is up west side of.
Yes, it is next to uh Tony's Plant.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, roll call.
Sewell.
Hi.
Lawson.
Hi.
Cook.
Hi.
Reister.
Hi.
Wyatt.
Hi.
Uh motion carries five zero.
Okay. Item U, discussion action regarding proposed police chief employment agreement. And um before. Um we go into a motion or anything, um just wanted, um Heather wanted us to remind you. Um that is her recommendation not to enter into any agreement, um because it confers more rights um on an employee than others. And it could lead to other employees seeking the same and then how would we be able to turn those folks down, so. A couple of motions. That she would see us considering is number one, a motion to reject the proposed employment agreement entirely. Or uh possibly a motion to direct the city attorney to make changes to the agreement as discussed and approve the agreement, so. Discussion?
All right, before we make any motions or anything, my point, and I want to say this and open everything so you know this, this is not against you. I am not in favor of installing this contract. And the reason I'm not in favor of it is not because. To unprotect you. But truly, in my head. My thinking is if something happened, we have options to be able to extend. Further than what you're requiring in the contract. Um and I don't want anybody to think that it's a. A slight on anything that you're doing or. That there is anything negative that I would associate with that. Because my hope is that truly that you are here for the long term. That's my hope and I hope you know that from discussions that we have had. Um my concern with this is again, just like Heather says, if we install it for one. I know there will be more coming down the pipe. And the whole point of having an appointment process through the city is to be able to have. The control that goes over with being able to appoint. Or not appoint those employees. Um and I know it's not a fun position to be in, especially when councils change, mayors change. Um I've had multiple friends in community governments that have left those jobs because they're worried about that. And I hope that that's not the case here. Um. But my vote would not to be to start a contract with anybody at this time.
I would step out and say that I most pretty much agree with Kate. Uh my concerns are. Uh that this would be setting a precedent and that would, yeah, we would get more people. Wanting such arrangements, um. I think that, you know, we need to be sure that we're. Set up in our agreements with um Chief Banks. In a manner consistent with what's going on with other police chiefs, you know, that we're definitely addressing issues. In ways that are consistent with other cities. Um. But yeah, I would hesitate to go against Heather's recommendations.
There she is.
Yeah, I got stuck a little bit.
But I also want to reiterate that, you know, that we definitely don't, you know, want this to be something that. Um. Makes Chief Banks think that he's not appreciated because we definitely appreciate him.
Anything else or? Would entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion to reject the proposal.
Okay.
And I've got something to say during discussion, but.
Okay.
I'll second. So we discuss.
Um Danny, I just say, I mean, I support you a hundred percent. Um and and I I I appreciate it. For me, it comes down very simply to, I'm hired and elected by taxpayers. To make the best decisions that I can here. And if our city attorney says, don't do this. And she's a professional and she's the one we've hired, I I just gotta. On behalf of taxpayers, regardless of my personal affinity for what you're doing. I need to not support it. And so, yeah, it's it's nothing personal at all. Um. If I were in your shoes, I'd probably pursue the same thing. And but but I don't think, I I also don't think. I mean, certainly this council. And I I don't see a lot of people lining up to run with with the one purpose of gutting the police department. I mean, there's obviously been things that we've talked about in public safety and elsewhere that, you know. Concerns that have come up as you've kind of expanded and progressed the police department. And some of that stuff is gonna create. Whatever, but I don't think there's any kind of witch hunt, you know, vibe out there. And I also don't think that if there, even if there was, that it would be terribly successful because. They only have a chance to unseat us every two years and only part of us and uh. Time has a way of calming things down, you know?
And I would echo what Matt said, um. Danny, I. You do a great job. You really do. Um, you know, we have this contract with. Every other police officer except for you. I mean, you're you're appointed. And uh work through the union rights. And I guess I look at it that, okay. If if you want the union rights and the police chief title, it just doesn't go together today. We're here to protect you as a council and make sure that those attacks don't happen. Um. You know, I reached out to a couple of different communities. I talked to them, got some, you know, we've done it, we haven't done it. Both sides of the story and understood probably where they were at. But more common than not, it was, no, we didn't do it and here's why. Um. Understanding where you're sitting, I would want the same type of deal. Honestly, I would. It's just unfortunate in my position today. I don't have that security of being a union person, you know, um. And that's sort of how I look at you, Jake, Chrissy. If if we were to enter into a contract. I'd want that contract to be the same for all of our appointed officials, you know, um. Which I think then we got three different avenues. We gotta go down and try to merge together. So I think we're better to say, no, not now. Uh you know, if the second proposal will go back to council or back to attorney. I don't think it's gonna be a promising. Way to go. That's just my two cents.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
You don't have to roll call if you don't want to. Do you want to?
No, that's fine. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry.
Yes, motion.
Um there's a couple of informational items in the packet, reminder items, regularly scheduled meetings held at the council chamber except the. For the library board, public works committee meeting, uh September eleventh at seven AM, mayor's task force. Committee meeting, um it's already been canceled for next month. Um Personnel, Admin, Finance Committee Meeting, September twenty-third at four forty-five. Public Safety Committee Meeting, September twenty-sixth at four PM. Uh next council meetings will be uh September ninth at six PM and September twenty-sixth at six PM.